Okay. And then the DOE, where do we want to put that? Oh, okay, put it down under eight.
Yeah, just put it under eight.
Yeah. Okay. Can I accept the agenda with the amendments?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
All aye? All aye? Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, special meeting on January 17. You got a second? All in favor? All right, public input, Leonard Bonne.
I just come here because I was told that the road get, or want to be, get closed. And I have no reason why. And one of them roads is my, my road into the farm that gets used just about every day, year round. And I go out there every week. But somebody wants to close it for I don't, I don't know what reason. And when they were put in there, it's in the Buffalo County bylaws that that road is the county road that the county and dad put in there, that half mile. They had to go the other way on the original mile line. They'd have to put in bigger culverts and it'd be longer. There's a whole lot more different terrain there. Cleaning that road more so than what's down this road that's in there is a straightened shot. And it gets used especially in the work, the harvest days. It gets used every day because there's cattle that gets down there and there's crops that are on that road.
Now, Leonard, there's provisions to get a road put on the map. It's not on the map right now. There's a little blue line on the section. And I agree, yes, there should be. And I don't think there's no cattle there now, is there? You don't live there.
I don't live there, but there's a lot of vacant places that are roads in. You want to plow them all out? Well, there's no, I let the guy that rents the ground, he goes in there other than just two, three months. And like I said, it gets used the whole year round, basically.
Well, if it was put in by the county.
And it was put in by the county and that's why they put it there because it makes more sense. You have a straightened shot instead of going down and up and down them hills and putting in bigger culverts and have more drainage that you could have fight that road with and more snow pit down.
So you're going in there every day now?
No, I'm not going in there every day. I go there, out there every week because I got a dog out there that I check on to make sure he's fed and watered and he's taken care of.
You can push out that road going up to the old mawer place to pull.
I haven't, this, I mean, I don't know if we have the, what this is. We're not, uh...
There is a process to close the road.
Hard?
It's never been done, right? It, just because it's not on our, just because it's not on our county map. It says it's not our road. He can have a road.
I'm sure we have it.
But we have, we have closed it.
You can have it put on, but we can't.
And there's a way of, and there's a way of getting it off too.
I'm saying, like at Fulton, they got nobody there, I don't think, but they got lots of cattle out there. So we should go, I don't think, the county opens it. And I mean, I can see if there was a business going on or cattle in there. In Hyde County, a person said the guy has his cattle on his county property. County wanted to open up just to get to his cattle. I appreciate your dog there, but you shouldn't make provisions to take care of your dog besides having the county have to plow.
I did, I did not ask them to leave and plow that road.
Well, then they're on the same page that if you didn't ask them.
Correct, because, like, I'm gonna stand up for them though. But I would have preferred they would not have went down that road because they made, on the north side where it catches worse now. And I could go in there with, I got a pickup so I could get in there on the winter months. And I'm taking care of that road for the last five years when the county was supposed to take that, even in the summer when the, the road was getting used all day, every day. I mowed that. I even talked with you about that and told you I was taking care of that, that road. I have no problem with that.
But we can get a night time.
If there's an emergency and if one person lived or uses that, used the road, plus an emergency vehicle that gotta get down a good road, wouldn't you rather have that maintained than a crappy road for an emergency vehicle to try to get down?
Okay, I can respond on the situation with Fulton. Fulton's have not asked me that, I know, in any shape or form to, for any service there. I can tell you, down here south, Bill Pine has been opening that road. It's on section line, he, his residence is there, he, it's not on the map necessarily. He's been opening it with a payloader. However, feeding cows here this last week, uh, he wrecked a tire and they couldn't get a tire truck in there. I, I called Jeff, he was very close. Fifteen minutes, we had that winged out. It's been blowing in all winter because there's a track through there. Now it's all winged out. You've got service back and forth and, and why not? I, I believe that these kinds of roads, we are not out there doing roads that don't need doing or not asked to be done, but I think that should be left up to the discretion of the highway superintendent. We have some others. We dug Wayne's out up here and it took two outfits up there because it blowed in really bad. We've got it cleaned out. It's not a problem. It's done and, uh...
I think his move's on the map, sure.
Well, it's not on the section line.
You know, I appreciate the fact that we had an employee that was on our insurance that had a permission to take our vehicles out there.
I have permission to take you.
Oh, listen. Thank you.
Okay, I, I just believe that we're not going to be in the business of, of opening roads that aren't requested or are not needed. But when there's a need, uh, we do not, Buffalo County does not have that many roads that we can't cover very well and without spending a lot of money. I don't think Jeff spent fifteen minutes in there and he had it all pushed out awesomely and they can get in and out. And I, I don't know why we would argue whether it's on the map or not on the map. It just needs doing. There's a number of other roads in the county that exact same thing. And if it's not needed, we, we've got roads that are on the map. We are not opening because they're not needed, they're not used right now. Quite a few places, even one here in Gann Valley I see is not open. They go around, it's meant people manage. But keeping these roads pushed out and winged out so every little snow blow doesn't fill them back in is kind of important. And we have the equipment to do it and we do it very well. Go ahead, I got more later.
Okay. All right, Sheriff?
I'm wondering about the 911 enhancement. Is, I see there's this rain thing, does that have to do with the 911?
Yes, remember before we got the 911 enhancement, that was our way of communicating that sheriff and over there they could put, or dad in, what do they say, child or upcoming storm warnings, everything that we had taken advantage of.
So the enhanced 911, what's...
We finally, we paid for the software, the state helped us pay for software so that we can do all the uploads because the server we have isn't going to take the uploads.
Was that the Lumen payment?
Yeah.
That was for the software that's needed?
No, that's for the upload, we're gonna put more whatever it is on there. We had something to do that we needed it because otherwise it would crash. We have these calls coming in and with that, so we're close.
So it's...
Getting close. Now, I think that's what this state was working, looking for. We had it, but we didn't pay for it until the other day.
Okay.
It's a bypass, so it'll be given back. So that eleven thousand, they're sending us a check back.
The state is, we pay it and it comes back. So, just one more part.
But we still have all the money in our budget for this 911.
And they were gonna give us an estimate of what it would cost us if we went elsewhere. Let's say winners got one, here and got one, so they all have different numbers. But we need to know how many emergency numbers we send out, you know? So they're kind of putting that together next. Sure they're probably giving it all evening. So, that's the next.
Great. Okay, on to the next highway. Fuel bids. Um, total oil, unleaded bulk price, three forty-one. Ethanol bulk price, three oh nine. Diesel number one died, four twenty-six. Number two died, three fifty-eight. Need a motion to accept the bids.
Motion to accept the bids, that's the only bid we got, right?
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Highway report. We have, but...
Okay. We started out the, the month here, uh, and when you hired me to oversee this position, uh, I wasn't sure of a lot of things or not sure what was going to be needed. I started off, I hired Jim Anderson to cover me if I had the, in the event that I couldn't be there or in matters that I wasn't sure about. He hasn't put very much time in at all. Then I asked Jeff to come over and assist us with this position and he did that. He brought a lot of things to the table that I hadn't necessarily thought about or my past position as highway superintendent, I simply wasn't aware of. And since then, uh, we've been working close tabs. Jeff has just been awesome. He's been here, we, actually, we logged down four hundred and forty-four miles one way, which equates to eight hundred and eighty-eight miles of between roads out. I, I checked this morning, it's eight hundred miles to the Oklahoma-Texas border from Gann Valley.
Make it past my house?
I hope they do. I hope they do. We've had to wing a number of them more than once. We've had a couple of these things that needed dealing with and we just want to have it dealt with them. They're covered very well. And, and to me, it's been a very timely matter. Jeff has been working on the inventory, the oil in the shop. That has currently been brought up to date. And then the question of this computer come up. We were, all of us had a different idea on how this computer should be handled. We had, uh, what do you call them? Connecting point.
Yep, yeah.
We had the connecting point come down. I sat there all afternoon. It was my intent at that time to take all these slips that we had. Lowell did a, did a lot of documentation. And we had this box of slips and I wanted to, I'm out on the each road of what it cost us this last year. It, it ended up being a impossible situation. We had load tickets, you know? And, and what happens, now the computer on the load scale computes every day or all the time each load. But what happens, we got P four, P eight, we haul gravel on. And then maybe the last load of the day, they would throw in one for P twelve, which is Elbira Township. And when we start this, we didn't even know that P twelve was part of the Elbira Township. So the billing was incorrect as well. But then, uh, we sat there and I listened to the, the computer mic all, all day, explaining and answering stuff for us and, and the computer hadn't even been completely set up. There was, nobody could even use it really. And so between the three of us, Lee, Jeff and I, we've been discussing, every one of us basically had an idea how that should be handled. But Jeff and Lee have both come together and, and basically we're gonna do these tickets. Can you put them up on the board or?
These are scale tickets.
Well, it's, uh, when they log in down there, they, uh, they enter everything into...
Yeah, I'll show you the time cards. This is, uh, this is a scale. This, this one is just P twelve, all the gravel hold on P twelve, that comes from the scale. Sorry I didn't rotate that before we come in. Uh, this is the time card, that new time card will be using at the highway. So that'll capture everything that you put into Ultra. It'll capture, the codes are on the right-hand side for the type of work, the employees on there, the time, the date, the project number column, that's what road you're working on. There's a column for fuel usage. So everything Lowell had on his logs will be captured on this. This is turned in at the end of the day. I'll put it into Ultra and you can keep track of roads. There's a cost per mile report, it'll tell you how much each road is cost. Basically, this time card is the lifeblood of the whole thing as far as time is concerned.
So you're trying to recapture twenty-two?
No, it's impossible. We, our records are not complete enough. Uh, we, we did that somewhat, we had to do that for P twelve because, uh, basically we figured out the mile per hour the patrol travels for blading and that's the time they got. We need, we need this thing spelled out to a lot finer detail than that. And, and I'm so big on this thing getting done at the time it's happening. When you've been in an outfit all day, eight, ten, twelve hours, whatever hours it is, and you come home and then you are supposed to go to a computer and fill in what you thought you did that day, it's worthless information. I mean, it needs to happen when it's happening. Otherwise, for me, I'll tell you about my son Russell a little bit, just to give you an idea. When he's out in the field, uh, logging, checking fields, he's got the computer with him. It's typed, punched in. When he leaves the field, it's already in my inbox. I take the information he gives me and I, I have a worksheet when I'm going out to do spring or whatever and a staple, the worksheet is stapled to his computer sheet. So we have it. Anytime I let that go by and try and do it afterwards, it's a joke. You just don't get it done right. So that is my part here. I'm pushing that it's done right away. And Lee and Jeff have come up with a plan here and they've been talking to Connecting Point.
And there is a thing coming where later on we'll be able to input right from the machine, whether it be an iPad, a cell phone, a computer, whatever it is. Like, right now, as I say, if they complete the time cards, if you carry it with you or if you do it at lunchtime and then at the end of the day, everything is right here. So what Lloyd talks about is true. And eventually, not too far off, I think we'll be able to do that electronically in the grader, in the payloader, whichever.
And nothing's been paid at this point? They didn't pay two thousand twenty-two, correct?
Oh, okay.
The contract, no, we have not paid that.
I mean, they, they're not gonna bill us.
They haven't billed us yet, no.
They won't bill until they start, when they start doing this.
Because they don't think it's been implemented to the point where they could bill us.
They want everybody to know that.
We have not been billed yet, no.
And the Alton guy, Greg Popper, says that most counties, they come in, when they come in, park their stuff there, what they bladed and stuff. Should be all remembered for the day.
But the computers, the problem is, Rex, the computers are time sensitive and they're locations, they're GPS sensitive. And if, to me, to me, it doesn't work. I intend to have this thing set up so it's done at the time it's happening. And after you've been in a cab all day, you aren't in the mood to set a computer two more hours before you go home and enter that stuff. I mean, to me, that's me, I guess.
Isn't that why you would have these cards?
That's why, well, the, the, the computer is dependent on these cards anyway.
I know that, but, but if the operator fills out the card, then whoever's inputting to the computer, which I assume to be Lee, would have that.
Yes, every day.
The operator wouldn't have to take time off after you filled out the card.
No, he's not going to. No, even the sheriff and the fire department, they have to fill out these cards. Otherwise the computer system isn't gonna work out. If we got entry, fuel used that's not entered, it's a problem. So it has to be accounted for. For us to get our mind all on the same page here, and it's gonna take some more time, but I think we're on to it. I really feel like we're on to a thing that's gonna work here and work very well. But it, you know, it takes some training and it takes some time to discern this. And anyway, that's what we're doing with the computer. Yeah, the inventory, uh, yeah, Joe and Jeff have both been doing regular service maintenance on the blades. Uh, I would like to say that Joe does an excellent job trying to keep busy. He's building a step down there for, it's really a safety thing that so he can work around servicing that without climbing on it. It's really cool. I've got to commend him on it. Jeff has been coming in and helping or doing this bookwork. I hardly do anything really. You know, we just talk it over and, and that's about all. My, my job isn't very hard. We have Larson and Bridge and Don, I had Don talk to them about that.
I made, I made, uh, sent us estimates, but when they sent the estimates, they did not realize that we had the real tax. And the estimates were for a square culvert or a very lower quality bridge, I guess is the way.
Yeah, half the length.
Half the length and it, it was like four hundred thousand. So when I called IMAE back and visited with them, I said, hey, we got real tax now. We fulfilled all of our requirements. He said, I will go back out then. He said roughly it'll be one point some odd million, which we would get about eighty percent of paid for because of what we're doing. So that's where it's at.
If I could say something, the, behind Lloyd, Jeff and Joe, the two guys who got working under on this town are, and there's their computers. I know that guy and Lee is getting it straightened out on the computer. We got this, this county straightened out, stopped pointing fingers and actually working with each other together. Uh, when I come, nobody even cleaned up around the shop. It took a disabled man to pick up them heavy blades that were just dropped where they took them off. I had to move them so I could mow around the shops. It looked half like presentable to people when they come into the, the, the. This is supposed to be the county position here. And it looked, I did that at home. We were growing up like that. Come on, don't always point fingers and work together. We, we, I've heard comments that, well, and I made a, made a comment about the national, well, we can't complain about the national government, which some people said, well, they're not doing their job. We're not doing our job here. We're not any better than them. We're always fighting against each other instead of working the situations out. And I, I tell you what, uh, I enjoyed coming out here and working for the, the year and a half what I come out here for. And to show you that you can get something done. I did three times mowing. Not because I wanted to for myself, I wanted to do it for this town. Now, like I said before, I am proud to be a part of this town. Come on, everybody, get along, get, get together, get along with each other and get this, this, anyway, our little, little area on the map, get it straightened out.
I agree with you, Leonard, but you can't just spend money, spend money, spend money when your taxes go up. You guys begin here saying something about that.
My taxes went up. I pay taxes just like you do on the ground I got.
You're happy in that.
Well, I am happy. But I, I don't like people always pointing the finger at somebody else when they're, where, when there's ten of them of their own, pointing back at them. They should be looking in, in their own closets, in, in to straighten out their closet instead of always pointing at somebody else who's, they, they think they're not doing their job. These roads have gotten straightened out and I go around in three different counties because my place borders three different counties. And this county's got the best looking road, county roads in them three areas. Because I travel, that's what I do, I've done the last year and a half of studies. And I studied the routes that I went out on just so I could do what I wanted to do instead of going a little bit here and going a little bit there. Because it, it goes to the point where I, I know that's what we did in twenty twenty-one going here and there. And I, I couldn't believe that, that's why I studied my routes out. And, and I got things done and I didn't complain about the hours I put in. And yes, I didn't, I'm a computer literate myself. That's why I wanted the, the outside job. But I put down every hour when I started and I turn that always in. I, I, I didn't need no computer, computer to do it. But if the computer's faster, but we've, we've shown, we've seen habits of time and time again, people, the computer, it was the human mind that come up with that computer, not vice versa. We're relying on that computer. Sometimes we gotta use the human mind and just common sense this here. And then we can all get together and work right.
Okay, definitely need to move on.
Just, just a minute, I got some more to report here.
All right.
Joe and Jeff will both be attending the M Shaw meeting in Mitchell. There's, uh, there's several dates, but they could only get us in on the sixteenth. And we have, we have to have these guys certified or we won't be loading gravel this summer. So we have to have certified people there. I know it's kind of in the middle, but, uh, we, we had to get people signed up for it. The other thing is Jeremy Thomas is going to be starting on that rock crossing over by the slab in February. And we're hoping that gets continued or finished up. P eight, three hundred and fifty-fifth avenue is open and three hundred and fifty-third avenue is open and two hundred and twenty-sixth street is open. These are basically secondary streets or roads that could be used, attained another way, but now we have them open and just north of Highway 34 where the flags were. It was posted, it's closed. Or flagged at least. Oh, up, well, no, I think it's up by, north of Dick Crobs Place going up around that Alk, isn't it? I didn't look up the streets and I'm not totally memory of them, but the other thing we want to stress that there's a spring thaw. We're going to have roads getting greasy and getting soft with the warmer weather, so, you know, bear with us. We'll do what we can, but when, when a road is soft, it's not even very attainable to put more gravel on. We'll try and keep that water off. That's be our intent from now on, I think. And, and I want to just say, you know, Jeff and I get together and talk a little bit, but there isn't a whole lot for me to do on this job. We are trying to coordinate. Jeff is building the house like five, six miles straight east of here. And he has a construction business and we're, we're working here trying to, Jeff can be here part-time and we'll have the work all done. Now, what Jeff will really want to do, he just told me he's still in the discernment mode, how he, what part of this he wants or doesn't. But it's my intent that when Jeff is gone, things will be covered. For instance, we had a big hose on the cap blow the other day. It was cold, really cold. And Jeff was here. We were working on the computer, so he left immediately. He got, plugged the hose. We got some oil in it. We moved it up to Jack Affernathy's where we could plug it in because it probably wouldn't even start. And then they went, got the hose and got it fixed the next day of going. We have exhaust muffler going bad on the cap. We're putting a lot of time, hours on these outfits and so we need to order a new muffler. That's like $1,200, but it has to be done, fixed to it. And that's the way it is keeping this equipment up. But I, I'm very, very excited about how this has been handled. And I, I want to commend Jeff for doing the good work he does. He could do more in a few minutes. Then come up and let's get done all day, you know. Well, we don't know. We don't know.
It's been nice. Mostly I've been getting work and I think they don't do that.
Lloyd, do you happen to have that flyer with you, that training? So that they can approve that training. Is there a cost for it? Yeah, I think it's $10, $20 per.
They, when I called, they said we are already a part of the.
The system.
So it's free? That's free?
Yeah.
So you don't need, you don't need, we don't need.
But we need permission for them to go, I suppose.
Yes.
And then the other one, Lloyd, by the time I wrote Slade down, when did you say the other one?
In February is the month I have. Depending on the weather. Were they not hauling rock there now?
All the rock is in Chamberlain right now. So they're just waiting to be able to get in there and start working.
So that rock, remember you came up with the, you came up with the deal besides that not rock.
Well, I don't remember exactly how we ruled on that, but the square rock is so superior to the round rock. The round rock has its place if it's buried right and done right. It's kind of, you know, and you've got a contractor in there.
Dig down to it.
The only reason I ask is so I can let them know you're coming, but you don't need it.
Well, I'm not saying we don't. It's a little vague for me because it's been quite a while since that was discussed.
Last summer.
They're still going to dig it down, so it's level with the stream then, right?
Yeah.
So you get a reduced cost?
Yeah. I have no idea. I have no idea. We just need to have it done if we're doing it. Yeah, I know, I know. But yeah, you, we've got to have it. We've got to be compliant.
They are willing to be able to get down that road to get to it from Highway 50 though, shortly. With this going on, it's going to be impassable. There's no gravel on that road at all. Well, they're not going to be able to haul rock in there on that road.
You can get it in pretty fast.
Well, they, they mean if it's slow, but once it does.
Right, strip it in from the north way, because we go by it. Strip it in pretty good.
I went in from the west. I stopped. It wasn't going to go through.
Okay, also, I have a request from Lee Plousky. The seven mile north road going to Duncan Church on the north side is Manseur State, I think. Anyway, Lee wants to take out the fence there. He's talking to the landlord, people he needs to, and he wants to blade that ditch back because it creates quite a snowbank there. I told him that we would put it on the agenda for next month. I will research it in the meantime. And, but I want you to know that we'll be at least trying to make a decision about what's needed or not needed there.
Have you looked at that yet?
No, we just found out about it.
The ditch is higher than the road, but I mean, when you get, when they've taken that dirt off, it might get to be quite a large amount. Can you even get rid of it?
I don't know what everybody wants.
Yeah, I mean, it looks easy, but I've been looking.
Exactly.
Yes. Oh, that's where the fence is for up in the ditch, it's no path.
I didn't see no fence there. I see him go behind the fence. There was nothing that, no indication that he went through that. Now, you know, for the, that's what I was asking. So I went to look at that fence. I went through that whole thing. There's nothing that goes through that fence. There's a line behind the fence line that they push back and has a line in front of it. There's no broken fence there. Did you go through it?
No, I just.
I'm just telling you. But thank you, Phil.
Okay, anything else?
I think I'm done. The thing I want to stress, I guess, is that we have, when we're down to one man here, we have to have people that are on call ready to assist if there's a situation that needs to be handled. And we don't have that many roads. I mean, we, we can breeze over these roads fairly fast if we're, we're on target. I don't think that, you know, I, I don't think we're going to be hurting for labor. That's the way I see what, with the crew we have right now. It's an awesome crew. I'd put them up again, anybody in the state. I just feel that good about it. So anyway, that's all I have.
Is the guy going to apply? Do people want to see the candidate?
I don't know what we want. That's up to you. That's the board. Jeff is interested. I'll say that. But I, in our conversation so far, Jeff has other commitments. He's not sure what he wants to let go and, and go, so he's asked for time for discernment. And that's the kind of the way I've been approaching it.
We don't have any applications at this point anyways, so.
Jeff and I will be discussing this and I will definitely let you know what we can, what he has decided in another month or so. He's a coach at the school. He's into a lot of different things. Or the, the house building is going to take time as well.
Okay, well, we'll move on. Lee?
Yeah, I got a couple things for the highway department. There was a letter from District Three. Greg Actenson was asking about. Yeah, and I can make copies, but there's a map behind you. What they're asking is please circle on the maps any roads that had realignment, surface or curb and gutter changes in the last year and note the type of changes. So I did contact Greg Actenson and I told him I didn't believe there was, but I would bring it in front of the meeting if anybody knows of any roads, some major work that was done. Otherwise, you just send it in. And it had a deadline of February 10th, but he said, don't worry about that. Just verify today and let him know. And that's the map behind you there so far.
It's that, and then there's another smaller one.
Yep, yeah, I think it's underneath there. That's the Gan Valley Street map. So they're considering that a road, you know, part of the map too. So if there's any major changes, curb, gutter. So the other thing is there was a notice. We are required to request assistance from the Highway Patrol for load limit. And I've got that here. And I talked to Kara Engel, Division of Secretary at, in Pier. And she said, just go ahead and it's something that you're required to do every year. We didn't get it in last year. And so we saw no point, you know, but you don't vote on it or anything like that. So I sent up an email to Captain Stall with the Highway Patrol requesting the assistance. And I've got a copy of that here too. So the only other thing I have is I revised the Highway Superintendent job description. I've got copies of that. If you want to see it, if you want to take it with you, I'll just give you copies of it. I don't think so. We want to. The areas highlighted are what I changed. Do the work if needed, commercial applicator's license if needed. And we've been working on the computer and we've got January entered. We got time entries done. We got to some of the inventory and Mike Shea had to update some inventory. We got to replace cutting edges on some blades and they weren't in inventory. So he took that with him and he's getting that updated, but what's that? If you would like, yep.
I didn't think you'd need motion on that. I guess I'll check.
Oh, in favor?
We actually had a, the last time I go, they checked it only because of a real action, which three or three, three or four years ago, it's actually on the table. They don't, we, we ask them to come, but they don't come. I mean, we're, we're just saying you can come. It's part of what we're supposed to do.
You know, they, they don't like the, where we still, but there is people out there that we know the road's loaded these days too. And we're spending a lot of money on these roads, so you guys, disenforcement behind all your thunder cats and that, that need to be fixed. They're going to tear back up. I had a guy jump in this morning. I'm going to leave our three heads. He's paying travel right now because they're fueling on a tank all the time and that's all for us. Like they have no knowledge of that. They're going to be telling us all.
I, what's the story there?
I've heard nothing about it.
We'll check it out. We'll check it out.
Like in the afternoons when it's so warm, it's just going to get greasy.
Yeah. We will definitely travel that road and see what.
I asked that engineer if they could put scales in that bridge and then he looked back. They have not possible.
We'll go check it out. Check it out tomorrow morning. I want to talk about it. You want to ride with you up there and see what they've done? I can tell you this, every time we don't check the road.
That's just one weekend. I think when I approached the subject way back 18 years ago, there was a question on my scales, accept or the accountability of my scales. It's hilarious. You should ask him to come in.
Like, because they require a place to pull off, because they have, they write, you know. They don't know what to do, Lloyd.
They're pulling over and pull it.
A few years ago. A lot of those lots, the chairmen told you, or I just told them, told you, they can just put, they can scale. And I don't know if they're still expecting.
You can see those guys come around.
Within a certain distance. You can't make them go through these, busting screens. Of course, they're looking here, but they're in a certain distance.
No, that's fine. Sheriff Wayne, you got any, do you have anything?
I guess I can just tell you that things are working out good with rural county so far with my contract. Daryl and I communicate almost daily. And we're just, you know, still in the process of working things out, putting together. For instance, they're getting, most of their vehicles have been, I've got the BIA radio communication channel. We got one or two to do yet. And they've, they've responded to maybe a half a dozen calls up here. Mostly, mostly phone calls that they're just, you know, can be handled just over the phone, questions, communication. I'm doing, I'm taking the phone during the day now and doing all the paperwork and clerical stuff. So that's moving on.
And they're doing a review after I, they'll come?
What's that? Yeah, we'll, we want to do a review.
Yeah.
Just, just giving you, you know, update. In the vouchers, they've submitted their hours and there's time sheets in there. And then maybe we could just, I can make a note on the rave thing unless you want to wait to get to that. I just talked to Andrew Plousky. He's the acting chief over there. And he, he's the one who brought this rave to our attention, you know, four, three, four years ago.
Two years ago in District Three also the tree. That was the interim between the 911. It suggested people, of course, number and so whatever you were the chief over there would have the ability to put something out.
We, you know, I haven't used it in three years. Talked to Andrew and they used it once. And he's of the opinion with social media, what it is today and that, that we have other avenues. He didn't, he didn't really think.
We, we just have that here on social media.
Yeah.
Now, to me, this is something that we'd have an opportunity to sign into or sign out.
Right.
You don't want to get them. You don't have to. How often do you keep that out there if you could figure out? When we did this three, four years ago.
How, how as, my question, how as, just me, how do I get on there to get that stuff? I mean, the road closures and it comes to your fault, comes to you. Okay, but do, how do I get to that point or does somebody have to put me in?
Yeah, there's a number that you call, that these guys are supposed to advertise. And you call that number and you sign it.
And that would tell us by, for instance, this road closure back whenever...
I'm really unfamiliar with the program, so...
Well, this was, this is what we were sold on three years ago. When District Three came in and we started all this stuff. This was the interim that they were going to use. I know you weren't very happy with it back then, and then Andy headed out, choked me after that, so it kind of fell by the wayside. But I know at the time you went to meters Catherine Bennett, but Catherine Bennett was for us. And this is, this is like, just like the school. I get texts from the schools, whether it's Changlin or school up there, school's going to be dismissed early, you know, and most of the kids, this is what they do here too. Maybe we have an accident, or maybe ambulance, and this was to take the place of 9-1-1 to be difficult.
I don't have an opinion one way or the other. I just, I talked to the auditor, and they said I would call Andrew and ask him what his opinion is. I'm just telling you that what his opinion is, is he doesn't think it's worth spending the money on to let it go.
It is only going to be as good as somebody administers it. Who's going to administer it? What it's going to be?
Well, it looks like it comes, you get it on email, phone.
I do know it comes through the 9-1-1, who's going to be the director of equalization. Probably where it would lie, right? Is that kind of where you would see it go under?
I have no idea.
I mean, if it was going to go under somebody, that's where I would...
No, I don't know if surrounding counties use it or not. I'd have to check, see how much it's... But I went along with it at the time because Andrew kind of thought it was worth doing. He's the one who brought it to us and proposed it. And like you said, then Andrew left and, you know, got moved to a new job. Now he's back, but he tells me he won't be, they'll be getting a new chief, but it won't be him. Whatever you want to do with it, I'm not even gonna say yay or nay. I have no...
Okay. President Bill?
I just want you to know, we've got this guy that's talking to a lot of them. Not aware, we're splitting the bill with rural county. They have charges against him, we have charges against him. His medical, relatively high key. And what we have to do is make sure that we're in our half at the best rate. And so I asked the auditor to make sure the sheriff sees the bills and try to pack it up, but not in this case. Probably cost them six thousand dollars and maybe four or five, but there's one time. All right? You can't control them.
How much longer is it going to be in there?
I don't know. You know, my expectation is, you've got our charges, you've got their charges. At some point, they'll make it, you know, they want to evaluate, they have to keep you as competent, and that's... That's all that I... And I expect at some point that there's going to be the offer of three to one of these, and one to the other one, you know, essentially. But how quickly that's happening, I don't know. I can kind of follow up with this.
Now, it's been a while since I was before I got here.
Well, we sent him to jail, and it was our problem, and we had altercation in the jail. That was the other part we got done. And now this is just him and his bill, which has nothing with other bills. And we moved him out of rural county into, because of that, it's more or less the same per day. Not much more per day, whether he's in winter or in the chamber, it's just showing off the court. But it's there. We don't control it, just like snow. You don't control your snow on actions very much.
Okay. One, I'll go with it. Yep, we have four hospitalizations there.
All right, yeah, there's four of them. Two, two of them do not have other, claim to not have other avenues. The other two do, these are two do not, they claim to not be covered by, usually by the VA or by a state. That doesn't mean they're not covered by that, just that's what they wrote on. The other two, they literally wrote that they have other coverage. Notice hospitalization is just a note, it's not a bill. They have to send a bill later, which time, if we dispute it, they will dispute it, okay?
That one that had the sticky, was for...
Maybe there's three here. Do we have five?
No, that one with the sticky, it's for... No, there was just four that were tested.
Anyway, because you're not yet due. But two of them are more of a risk to us than the other two. Okay? Here's what you look at, which can actually make some... Okay, first off, when it says notice hospitalization, that's just something they're required to give us within ten days. You have to say, this guy's possible. Then they have to give us an estimate of what the hospital medicals could be. This is just a block there. Yeah, you don't know. All right, but this is the part we read. All right? If we're not this, we're not this, we may be prepared on any of it, okay? Yep. One's from Sanford, this is one, and then you can look at the person, you can look here. We're not supposed to shit other people, okay? May or may not be, I don't know that, they say they're not. Yeah, I'll show you, let me show you, let me get that. Okay, let me show you this one, okay? Here's one. All right? We have the name, the bill, we'll look at that, here, okay? These are the ones I worry about. This one, I don't think will be ours, okay? These three, I don't think will be ours, but these two, that's a support.
Just because they live in Fort, don't they?
We don't take action. We don't take action, I'll try to...
We don't know.
We don't know that, that means. These, 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 here's what happened. They go into the hospital, they say to them, "Are you covered under IHS?" Some of them, even though they should say yes, they don't. Tell them to say yes, okay? Sometimes they say no, and it's like, "Yeah, you're fine." But we have to argue about that, okay? We don't really take any action. But, but I, a lot of times, show for you, so you can look at that. All right?
We don't do anything until you...
Now, like you said, what date was that turned in that you...
Well, okay, this, like, we don't, this person was a visitor, and they said it was tentative, okay? So we probably got this two weeks ago or something. Maybe, when did we get this? They said they sent it to us on that day, the day it showed up. It could go on for a long time. Yeah, this, this is just kind of...
We just file it and keep it.
We just file it, everybody has a name, they have a file, and later if they send us a bill, then we start. That's where it's at.
We don't put a bill, we must be back on the board.
Yeah, and we never could do it. And these aren't even bills, they're just...
Well, that's why we don't pay any bill until we have backup.
Yeah, this has got to come first. If they never sent us this, wouldn't they... And they're good, they're pretty good at sending these.
Do you have all five right now? I got them in that pile, I'll grab them later. Okay, so then the next is the treasure and audits report, which balances, so everybody should be able, everybody do them copies of that one. I just want to note, it won't always happen this soon, the earliest of the month, that month. We were just able, since it balanced so, it was so smooth, I know, but it just, I won't have it set early every month. But this month, we were able to do that. So next I put on here, checks and payroll. Just because I did not, I was not able to, I did not put it into the newspaper by mistake. So I put it on here. I won't always put payroll on here, but I do always put checks in here for it. So just an FYI on that one, so. The next one is the highway job ad. I just kind of wanted to let everybody know, I did put in for two weeks. Because I wanted to give the commissioners a chance. I know you guys said to continue, but I want everybody to kind of look at the price on what it was, you guys built to see that in there, and maybe you want to figure out if you want all of them to be continued, or... Well, I did Central Dakota Times, The Rocket. And so you also have your vouchers on there, so you'll be able to kind of see where the Mitchell Daily Republic here on Queensman, True Dakotan, and then Miller Press. So you didn't do anything in that state. The state was a little bit more difficult than I thought it was going to be to true, so we're still working on that one. So, yeah. So... Oh, two weeks for hearing Queensman is basically five hundred dollars. We also wanted to say thank you for how much it costs to put an ad into yours versus some of the others.
I think we kind of figured out there. I'd really like to get a video.
Okay. That's where we did do the job, so that...
You got one other question, please? We kind of skipped over the weeds after I asked a question on it.
Engrants update.
Can I, can I finish up my...
Yes, yes, please do, please.
I was on a roll, thanks. So anyway, so job service, yeah, there's part of that. It was take two steps forward, five steps back with them. And then I tried calling the ones in Miller, or the ones in Mitchell, because I knew her. And then you had to send them to Pier, and the ones in Pier were so difficult to work with. So I will continue to get it in there, but keep that.
Okay. Last question for a statement or something?
In regards to...
Well, the money stamped in auditor's office and the registered deeds office. Twenty twenty-one, the expenses were fifty-three thousand.
Are we on, on the job, on the ads, or what are we on?
Talking finance. I mean, went to seventy-two thousand.
What, what do you, where are you at?
Went to auditor's office, expenses. I just want people to know, okay, we went from fifty-three thousand to seventy-two thousand. Registered deeds office went from eight thousand to just about twenty thousand. And that's the end of it. We don't have to make no motions or nothing, let's just state.
All right, so, all right, thank you. And then... So that's what's been said with the ads. Okay, we have any more questions regarding ads? Okay. And then, so we already talked about the rave, does anyone else have questions about rave?
Well, I think I know it's only as good as the treatment under that. Here again, I don't know. Maybe it's people who do this. But we also have 9-1-1, and it's certainly like, it's a thousand dollar season. I hear it's easy to find out, yes. Snow is in the application. I would be supportive of something. Excuse me? We could have got all this stuff on our phone too, don't we? So I would support, I would support going with rave the last three years. By that time, on 9-1-1, it would be up to one, COVID came, we had a lot of expenses that we didn't have. Do I make a motion to support that in the three thousand?
Is it, is it a three-year program?
Yes.
So it's a thousand dollars a year?
It's a thousand a year.
The last time we did this was three years ago. Expired in November.
Yep.
And would that be tagged on to the Director of Equalization in terms of being able to do that?
Hey?
9-1-1. Well, 9-1-1, if that was going to be...
Hey?
I can maybe look at... Sorry.
I'll second.
I got some information. I've seen on the rave today, and I was asked at one time to see if we have credentials to log in. If there's time left of our subscription, I can, with the information we got...
So they'll send you that information. And would you please put it out there, on their webpage or whatever, so people have idea about what you're trying to do?
If we still have a login, I'll find it.
That is no good, laying on somebody's guess.
We do not have the login, because it was something Honey Bunny had hotmail. Where Honey Bunny is. So... All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. Okay, then we're on to F. So the Director of Equalization, Rex, has requested...
He has a speech, if you can, he stopped doing it.
Okay.
Basically, the way I understand it, we got to have somebody appointed, and I'd make a motion to appoint Dolce Cincinzi. It's Director of Equalization, she's certified.
I'm not giving a vote to that. Okay. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to have a conversation that we lost the Director of Equalization. When we talked last time, we were three of them to look it up. At that time, we did not know one of them had to be appointed in order to take the classes. So I'd like to think he knows that we're going to be...
Can I ask a question? Why are you, the two of you, not in favor of hiring Dolce to be the job?
You can't talk about it until you get a motion approved. There is no motion, I just made a second, on motion. Once you make a second, then you can do discussion then. Just because you get a second doesn't mean that you're both for it. You have the tools of order, you need to go to that.
Also it...
Okay, now, not going to...
You wouldn't ask the question.
Thank you.
Consider that. What's your reasoning?
She quit. And why? And why do we want to come back? And the applications, I can't say what it's on there, but it's not to stay forever.
I guess my problem with the reasons that when they took appraisals on new buildings or whatever that was supposed to be put on there? A lot of discrepancy. Somehow we had one that wasn't even put on, but we know them, so I mean... And I think that, and I think it was not a full-time position. I also wanted to be able to understand that that was a person that was an employee of the county that didn't tell you when they were leaving, or when they were going to take off for you, which even had, everybody else had them. Going for themselves, there was no accountability, so I...
And in response to what Dawn said, that she quit, Yvette quit, and you hired her back. And I have no problem with Yvette whatsoever. I'm just saying, the two situations are...
When Yvette quit, she went to another job. Dolce, or whatever, I did call and offer and ask if we could negotiate. And she told me no. I, you know, I did, I picked up the phone and I called her, and I said, "Can we negotiate this? Is there more money? Is there something we as commissioners can do?" And she said no.
I know, I wasn't at the meeting, but I understand she's in and you made the offer to do the job as needed for someone to know. Is that correct?
She didn't come up in front of me.
All we got is an application.
Why did she say that?
Or did she say that?
She didn't say nothing. I didn't even know that was her. I thought it was a little boy.
Read the application.
I didn't see the application.
You wasn't allowed to see that?
I see that, I didn't see it. Well, did you present it at the meeting?
Dawn had it.
It was handed here, it was right here, I didn't see it. In fact, she was here, but I, she didn't hand it to us. Wasn't she on the agenda?
It had all been tried.
So what did we have? What did we have? I don't even remember what the agenda said. Did you have to mic that up?
We had that three, that three deal, and Dawn had the application. It was up the herd, it was left.
It was laying in the, in the, on the table.
Somebody should have manned it, did somebody should have manned it yet, did you know it was there?
We, we said that we were going in.
I asked them before the meeting, and she said it was on the.
We said that we were gonna go in and we had our stuff, and, and we said that we had two different things to come into the executive session, and we said that we had both of those two items. In there, and so we talked about.
Also, before the meeting, I asked you, you said it would be on the agenda, and I took your word for it.
It was in the executive session, and I had both of those two items in the executive session.
And Dawn had the application.
When I laid it on the table, I thought everybody had read it.
So I can't assume anything, I guess.
So what, you didn't even consider that application, or what?
No, because what we considered was putting the, combining that office and putting Lee in there. And Yvette, Registered Deeds. And combining, because they're not full-time positions. Could be put up to. So that was kinda what we talked about, and.
What I like, what I like also, what I like also is the fact that the working environment, the environment is not possible, working environment. That's my reason. That's why I'm still going through.
So you're gonna put that's the full time now?
Yeah.
Well.
He's already.
You just said you didn't want Dolce, cause she comes and goes as you want, you're gonna have a certain time, he's gonna be in office, it's about thirty-two hours, right?
I'm considered full-time now.
Yeah, he's considered full-time.
But he's got like three different deals.
Yeah, because that Director of Equalization does not cover forty hours a week. Yet so, go back and see what the internet was on for. Okay? No, I'm sorry, I just can't support that.
With the help of the Registered Deeds and those duties, uh, should free up enough time, I can still work on the grants. Um. Do the IT stuff, the video, the website, handbook work, stuff like that.
Have you started that since?
That we need, uh.
You can't until you get permission.
Yeah, that's why he was gonna start, but we didn't select him, we, we said a combination, now you have to come back with one.
You talked to the gal, I hope we have to date that.
Never know you. And, you know, where you make a situation, which were small, and we, they don't have a full-time position. And, and, and she said, well, you know, kind of like, what if, what if, what if? And then, uh, she said, well, we need Adame, we need Adame rather than this committee. And, well, we can do that, we can get Adame, and somebody qualified, or you have somebody qualified anyway, to take the test. And then she seemed to be, okay? You're having a meeting in a couple of weeks.
And there's a certain.
Excuse me?
There's a certain, I don't know, say, there's one. A line of doing this, so no matter how many times you call that office up there, no matter how many times you try to select, have them select you. The selection's done here. Okay?
What are you talking?
People that call up to the office trying to make sure that they need it up here, or how, just call for the whole, then we'll give it to someone else, cause this has nothing to do with what he's asking for.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Same say.
Okay, now, what I'm trying to say that has nothing to do with this is, I appreciate the fact that you got a hold of Steve, thank you Steve. The other, last month when you were asking him for all that stuff that you did. Hopefully Steve don't charge us for all that stuff he does, because you know attorneys are kinda high price.
Well, there's gotta be somebody.
Right, right, well, you know what, you should've asked me, I could've told you. Go right into the Secretary of Legislative Audit, they've got all the statutes in there, you don't have to pay an attorney to waste his time pointing out something you're looking for. Well, you're the one that started this, I did.
You went ahead with the committee.
He didn't cost us, yeah. I'm sure he put a couple hours in, I hope he charges you and not us.
Taking on my weight, this guy.
Will you five percent increase, I'm covered.
What?
Let's move on.
Here we are.
Um, yes. Well, we don't have more hours then, we need definitely to be permanent. Maybe that's not permanent. That's, that's, she can do, the other picture can do things that we don't have to approve.
Yeah, and the other part of it, the reg, and the Registered Deeds part of it, remember when we started saying we gotta step down here?
Well, we'll jump out and scroll with the minutes.
We need to make sure that the stuff's all that done. You know, so we've been sort of seeing that, we've got stuff that we have to, what is it, in, not inventory, tell me. Put it in there so it's legal.
Yeah, the index, same in the.
Cause it hasn't been done, you know, we gotta take catch up.
Yeah, I understand that.
So that's all, that's all that is.
I understand, I, I understand that, but I wasn't when I asked.
Okay, what did you ask?
I asked, are we going three more hours?
At this point, no.
Is he gonna do the highway records too then, like you put in dollars, eighty, ninety?
I have no idea. We were talking and discussion of the data, reporter also about something that we're against.
We'll just have to wait to see what, how much it, when we know what it's actually going to entail. You know, those are things we don't have concrete of what we know yet. Well, I know when Dolce was in there and I asked her. And she said it definitely did not need to be full-time.
Yep.
But she's right under it, it's.
Less than five.
Less than five, long enough to hit the hay.
Why do you hold it against Dolce, because you hired her for a full-time job, she didn't say, I got that. Forty thousand dollars, and then you're forty dollars. I didn't hire her, I wasn't here. So why, why would, why do you hold that against Dolce? She does several requirements.
I'm just looking at that. Work environment, I mean, I'm gonna tell you I can walk here and I can't feel the. Division. I like the work environment. And I'm sure our employees will too, we can't keep a highway superintendent if you're still gonna be following him around. You know, you can't keep good help around here, I mean, we're in the middle of the boom stocks, and we want everything done by.
Just did a good job, didn't he?
Well, I know he does, I don't have anything against him, that's why I say it be nice.
Yeah, I know, he's nice.
Do your job, I am nice.
Don't micromanage.
Where'd you pick that word up at?
I know. Oh, you're.
He's not sitting in the middle, I'm sorry.
South Dakota Department of Safety, fire super. Assistant, but.
Okay, there's, there's a letter in there for you guys.
Alright.
So if you could just briefly look that one over, it looks like this is something that's been done yearly.
Tell them who they get all those.
Right.
Actually authorized to spend money, let's say we have a fire out there, and.
Who, who have we had previous?
Wasn't that the head of the fire department?
Yeah.
And then Wayne maybe, Wayne, Wayne, do you remember who we used, was it head of the fire department?
Oh, yeah, I remember it.
Yeah.
Very long. But also remember. That then.
Chastised.
So.
Not in Buffalo County.
So don't, don't consider me.
Um. What do they do, I mean, I'm, I.
They're, they're the person that's literally authorized, that's somebody that they can talk to. Let, let's say the state, if somebody died in the state, and they wanna play their family down. Fire suppression on, somebody has to say, yep, that's okay, we'll take that. That's pretty.
Oh, okay.
They're authorized at expenditure of money. In an emergency situation. Fire suppression, that's what it's about. And they want a name, they wanna know somebody that they could talk to. So it could be. Be somebody on the commission, it could be somebody in the public, they, they don't have to have a job, I mean, they. It could be. From the fire department, it could be the water, anybody.
Well, why don't we appoint the three commissioners? And they could call, I mean.
Yep.
That would be a suggestion. I can't move or do anything, but. Would you be okay with that, Rex?
It's number nine.
Yes, I would make a motion to.
Did you, did you, you, did you read it?
Yes, I'm a three.
Okay.
I heard what he said. Here do we need. The dates and term of duty, okay? So let's, let's take it and tell you the commissioners are no longer serving as commissioners. So set it sand for a year, two years, longer, you're commissioner. Okay? Um, and, uh. So that takes care of dates and term of duty. And I think that's all, that's all you need, and we have to send it to, so we need a resolution. That I would say says this. The purposes, for the purposes of the South Florida Department of Public Safety. Do you write this down? The, the designated appointees for rural county.
Buffalo, excuse me?
Buffalo County, not, not county, okay, Buffalo County. Are the three commissioners currently serving. And they shall be authorized as long as they are acting commissioners. For the purposes as defined under S D C L forty-one. Dash twenty-eight, that shows up. That tells. Got it?
Got it. And it's.
Need a motion in a second, and then you need to actually write that up at some point, send it to these guys by.
Yep.
You said your motion, you know, you said your motion, yeah?
Okay, I think.
Well, yeah.
So it's, there was a motion there, or has.
And your motion, what did you say?
I got it.
No. She was right there. All second. All in, all in favor?
Yes.
Did you bring that, that's recently, so.
Yes.
How many?
About road?
Yeah. Can we do that, or will that have, be a special?
Well, you gotta, we're in the room. You gotta set it here, okay?
You gotta add the type of stuff.
Yeah, yeah. This is really what I talked about.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
So. We're done with that part.
Yes.
Do this resolution now, okay?
Yeah, do that, we need, these guys to move in second.
They did that part.
Then you're done.
Okay, now we should move back over to, let Lee live doing.
The planning development district?
Um, no, but if we could go back.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry about that.
But we, uh, we noticed when we got our permitting. Notice of our testy tax increase. There's a good letter about weed control in there too.
Yes, you understand what that is?
Written letter, but is it gonna be enforced?
Okay, here, here, here's the deal about the weed law that you got, everyone's taxpayer. When, when we have a weed problem. If you have Canadian thistle growing on your property, I have to send you a first notice. And then I have to wait a little while, and then I have to send you a second notice. And by that time, the weeds have already dumped all their heads out of where I think, okay? So in order to add, to, to, uh. Move a little faster. We send everybody the first notice right now. So if you do have a weed problem, we're, we're, the next source you're getting is your second notice, and we're closer to being able to control it. Because the problem is always bad. It's sorta slow that by the time we actually ready to enforce. It's useless, they've already headed out. So, so it's not that, that's why you get that letter.
But the question is, who do you count that, uh, problem?
Yeah, I think, uh, these are, which is.
Okay, we did out here, he, the home that he gets those restrictions, they create, and he gets this one upon our.
It had to be verified by the state.
Well, if we got a re-supervisor, he should be able to distinguish between weeds up there. You know, not hard to do it.
Well, it's hard to get a re-supervisor, though. You could be it. But, but that's what the purpose was, first of all.
But just, it's just like the holder, if you want to enforce it, it just waits time. Well, we gotta get close, so.
We're trying to get close.
Like an engine, it's got pretty, it's the increased faculty, everybody's worried about, so.
I think that's because of school.
That wasn't us.
Checked it on where it came from, yeah.
But it's.
It is, big.
It's school.
Yeah, we have no control.
Check your, your tax bill is.
Now, if someone in Buffalo County School District, then we could have control, but.
But we don't do that here.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, planning and development.
This year.
Oh.
Did you see, did you read the whole thing?
Okay, okay.
What's this for? And so then, if somebody isn't onto that, and they want to do it, then you can tell them to play the bill, but then they're charged.
Okay, here's fair. Dom, can you try to explain what you're trying to do, right?
Yes, because he's not on the agenda.
It's just.
Yeah, Steve's, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Can the pain just go with the whole lot, or do you try to?
Yeah, I can try to go into town, if it's.
That's planned, but, yeah, but it's quite a house, all right?
Yep.
All right. Um, there is a statute under which the, the counties can, can, if they wish, take care of private roads, all right? The, the key to this, and I won't give it all to you specifically, but. First off, the county's gotta have a hearing on whether they want to or do not want to, uh, do private roads, then. In that consideration, there are about four things you gotta think about. Is it in the best interest of the county as a whole? Um, how is maintenance defined? Okay, it allows the county to do six hours of maintenance on any private road. Only, only six hours. So what is maintenance, is it graveling, is it snow removal, is it weak or, I don't, you gotta define it. Then you have to decide, uh. You have to have a private, individual contract with every person that you're gonna do it for. So I gotta come out to you, I gotta come out to you, I gotta come out to you, if you wanna do that. Or they could come in, yeah, but you gotta have, you gotta have individual contracts with every, every person you're doing it to. Then you have to limit the cut maintenance to six hours, you have to keep records of who it is and who we're doing, and then you have to bill them for the. The work based upon at least your minimum cost, you have to determine your minimum cost for mowing, whatever.
That's the one thing I was telling somebody at the bar, but you gotta set your rates in case there's a. Theme deal where roads are washed out, if you don't set your rates for.
For even that stuff, but that, that's different than that.
Well, I mean, once you set.
They should be the same.
I mean, you should have rates set.
Anyway, but it, but, and then, okay, so you gotta determine all that stuff, and if you pass it, then you gotta renew it every year. You gotta renew it every year, okay?
That's the protect, private contract.
Well, yeah.
That's off to the discretion of your highway superintendent, I mean, if a guy wants to go out and buy a section lane somewhere, you say no.
Well, and then those are, those are the issues you gotta decide, do you have enough people to do it? And what if, what if you and I and, and Lloyd all want, all said, we wanna be doing it, but. There's a lot of work to do, and they don't ever get to my road, and I'm pissed off because I agreed that you were gonna do it, but now you aren't doing it for me, then you got issues. But the start of that whole thing, the start of the whole thing is, you, you, uh. You petition, you put this out there, and you advertise it for the next meeting so that you could have that hearing or, or discussion, okay? About what you wanna do. And any, any given landlord can petition, okay? He can within the company. So any landlord could pound off and say, I wanna petition to do that. And so Rex, as a commissioner, or as a landlord, either one, can say, I just wanna have a discussion. That's what you go with, you're not, you're not approving this when you say you're gonna have the hearing, you're just setting.
It's a big part of the next meeting.
Yeah, 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 so what you do is, uh, you move by action, second by somebody, and basically this is a petition. Okay?
And then we've got to decide what we consider maintenance, whether it be leading, snow, gravel. Right, that's, that's what we've gotta.
And then, and then I think, I think probably it goes back also to that issue on. Then we've gotta probably maybe put them on our, I don't know that, the county, you know, that, we're supposed to have this county roadmap that says these are going for maintenance. Maybe that has to go on there. I, I'm not. I, I'm not clear on that yet.
Uh, they're talking to that guy, he didn't say nothing about that, but he said he could do this, the state, and then if somebody is going by and you want their little break, he said, sure, you gotta pay for it if he says he does. And some guys are already paying for that.
Yeah, but they have to realize they're gonna come second to our.
But like you say, it's up to the superintendent, I mean, you gotta have a little common sense, you can't drive twenty-five, the guy's driving.
But, but, these guys are gonna have to, you know, we'll have the hearing. Yeah.
So. So, you understand what, what we're doing here, they're just gonna have a hearing. But Rex is petitioning, you have a hearing. And you need a motion to set that hearing, I assume the next meeting.
Make a motion to have them hear it next meeting.
Is it gonna be before the meeting, during the meeting?
Yeah, just like the regular.
Can you set a time?
Yeah, you can set a time if you want.
I think you should set a time because they could be sitting here till four o'clock.
Okay.
I'm talking on a set, Rex.
Set who?
Time for your hearing, time for your hearing.
Yeah.
We start at one o'clock, by the time we get around to it, it could be three o'clock.
Two o'clock.
You set a hearing. You're sitting.
Two o'clock, what day is the next meeting on?
March seventh.
March seventh, two o'clock.
I'll save that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Uh, Consumer Price Index.
Should I give this to Deb maybe?
Yeah, give it to her, there, there's kind of your motion.
There's not much I would have to do yet for it.
What?
You gotta advertise it.
You got a motion second, so you don't really do that.
The motion would be after this, correct, after the next meeting?
Well, yeah, they have not, all they've done is set a hearing about that.
So, you need to notify people that we're having a.
Not telling, if you read that at the top, it says the motion was made by X, second by Y.
Okay.
I think we gotta advertise it. What are the papers that you're gonna have the hearing?
Okay. All right, so the next thing was, um, CPI, it's just, um, I sent it already to Harold Raven and Les Wall. This is just an informational thing, I already put it on there, it's not for you maybe to be called to go to any place or do anything, it's just simply an informational.
Okay.
For you guys to know, so. Veteran Services Affair, uh, rural county, this, I don't know if you saw this one. Okay, it's simply a draft, each did not get a hold of, so rural county sent this to me, um, each did not get the final draft, so I don't know.
I'm cheating.
Okay, so I'll get a hold of you in regards to it, so I don't think we can finalize anything. Yeah. So. Next one, South Dakota Labor and Employment Laws, I just wanted to give an FYI on that one, because I know some things kind of got confused in regards to, um, the Highway Department. Did I give you that one? Okay. We do not have to give half hour breaks unless we want to get half hour breaks. So, I know that there was some confusion that came through that says we have to get breaks, South Dakota does not require breaks. So, just an FYI that comes through that says we're working somebody to death because, so, just an FYI, South Dakota does not require it.
No, it affects your time too, because you gotta go half hour longer.
So, so if we ever want to in the past, make a motion or something, but I just want everybody to know where we're at with it, or. South Dakota.
Where are we at right now, they don't, they don't, Kenny, you said you used to have to.
We were forced to, I wish, and it stays in that state law.
We, I don't.
And we were taking, we have to take it out.
But that was up to the commission.
They said we were taking that.
It might have been, then, you know.
Yeah, you were saying all of it, and another one said, I don't know.
Well, I don't know when this was implemented, but I hold it up and.
I don't need it.
So.
We blamed it for twenty years.
Oh, so.
Thanks for the open.
So, again, I don't know when it was implemented, so. Um, so the next one in here, this, I got this from. The Spring Valley, so I just wanted to give you an FYI on that one. So, you guys.
We're having a drawing, I was too.
Yeah.
Remember though, when that came through that they still had.
Yeah.
Look at that, into that one.
So, what is that? And we know what that was.
It's a hog confinement with.
So, so they pick it up compliant.
That they were compliant.
Now, like we've discussed before, Buffalo County has used input today on that.
Right, that's what come, I just wanted, and I didn't even really need to give the input or give it to anybody, I just wanted to give, uh, everybody a courtesy of it. Um, so the next one, I'm gonna let you guys discuss the next one, Abernathy Legion Post, so you guys have the floor.
Yeah, we discussed before, on the night. I gave the permission to do it, but we draw that.
Kenny gave me pictures and stuff, I'm to give Catherine Benton, um, and an estimate to fix the doors over there, I will give them to her, she said that she know where to go for the ground, so. And it's Catherine Benton, I'll, I'll do my input, so. Yeah, you know.
So, you're gonna do anything with the foundation?
The, the steps are.
Oh, you got, you stuffed the foundation in the back, it's falling apart, I know the doors, you got, have nice doors, but we should do something with that foundation. Even shifting.
Wait, on the front?
In the back, but I walked around.
Well, I think if she don't get it, she'll probably address that.
Well, I think, yeah, make sure you get that, because that beautiful door is, because it's, that's why your, I would not ask that in the back, because of the policies, it's super back there.
And the, that's his report, um, one will get to me, but he said it's basically.
Yeah, it says there's a trace mark of an aspect that's related to material, there's some fancy word for it, it's just part of the tiny stuff, and all in the same place, and I deserve another help there. But if somebody could go in there, strip it out, any chance they're gonna have to get it, well, yes. They'll have a hundred report backing up the whole report you're gonna do, it's not good.
Nope, I, you guys have to make the motions or whatever on it, so, they've given us.
What do you think?
Can you read it?
Um, sure, the agreement between Abernathy, Post sixteen, American Legion, and Buffalo County, all of Gamb Valley. Rent is for the radio tower and equipment on Legion property and regular building on Legion property. Property, property is located on block eighteen, lots one through four, this is for consideration of two hundred dollars monthly, the Legion will pay electricity based on sixty-seven a month usage. If the rates go up, county will add on to Legion fee for increase. County will furnish liability insurance on their tower and equipment within the building. In case of any property damage caused by any malfunction of the equipment, Legion will be paid for any damage to the building. Legion will not be responsible for county equipment. Payment may be monthly or yearly, starting January one of twenty-three. This agreement will be binding until both parties agree to terminate.
So, how can you be responsible for this equipment when you have two feet of insulation dug out of the walls by a various farmers?
I thought we was trying to try to get somebody over and see if that equipment was still viable, because that was my.
He was scared.
What was it? What is it?
Catherine, you said it has to fix the rate?
No, I said, I asked, uh, when we went in there, we had all that, um, insulation or whatever we had, room where the terminal was, and my question was, I wanted them to come down and take a look at the terminal because that air and all that stuff gets.
They, they came and looked at the machine, or looked at.
Yeah.
Did that, we, get them kind of reading back to them.
I.
Everything worked, didn't it?
Everything was workable.
Yeah.
Because they came, they, didn't they have to come down for as, uh. Help me, yeah, didn't they come down to, uh, for insurance?
Mitchell two-way, and they put a value on it.
Yeah, they had to come down and put a value on it, everything was.
For the insurance purposes?
Yeah, yeah. And everything was good and workable.
We didn't check it over.
Yeah, that's what I wanted, yeah.
So, did they put the doors on the cabinets and clean the mess out of there, or is it, I mean, we're responsible for this equipment, or a fire probably? And this huge mess?
No, if a fire started from the insulation.
Or the equipment.
If the, if the fire started because of the equipment, then we would be responsible.
Well, the equipment is not taken care or contained, I mean, the door is off, the stuff is off, and you have markups to say like that.
I'd have to look at it, I, I mean, they, did they say we ain't gonna have insurance back, or? No, I didn't read anything like that, no, no.
Well, they didn't go into the.
I don't think they went in there.
They did not go into the building, they wouldn't.
Now, I, I might add that if they, if they were to do so, they might write that up because it's incorrectly housed, they might say, hey, look, we don't want to cover this, because of whatever reason. But there was a value put on it, and I think it's listed on the insurance.
Yeah.
For equipment, yes, I believe so.
So, they listed the equipment value without wanting to look at it?
No, the Mitchell radio can, so we could put a value on the insurance, but the insurance company.
Because they, they're the ones that gave me any.
Right.
Yeah.
When was the last time the insurance went into the building? When was the last time the insurance went into the building, they're just telling you they didn't want to go in there.
That's insurance problem, not, oh. They don't, inspect, then they're gonna have.
I don't think they could inspect right now, because Kenny, the doors are going.
However, they should have inspected before they insured, if they didn't, then it's covered, or whatever it's insured, I think it's just Mitchell.
Right.
And this agreement, please, the law makes it impossible to maintain it.
Well, I, 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 you charge to keep your lights going, sixty-seven dollars, you just ask and understand, but it's also saying if anything is used, we'll be doing more. So, if you go in there and hold your little fundraiser, what is that? Whatever, for the great.
Holy shit.
Fire rates are the same, and so is the county's, that's the school commitment.
You know, if you want to put, um, on there until both parties agree to terminate or insurance denied.
Something like that.
You know, we can amend it to that.
Don't use the word deny, as long as you insured.
Insurable, yeah.
Yeah.
Something simple, whatever. Don't go denying anything.
I still think they ought to come down and look at that building, like, you have nothing there, all that, if you get a good windstorm in there, it's gonna go out, and that, and that machine runs all the time.
You, you just simply cannot maintain electronic equipment with holes that big in the wall and the stuff all pulled out, ridiculous.
Science down in there.
I know in the back there, there was stuff sticking out, because of that road, you got anything.
In my opinion, I can't go, I would go along with it, but, um. When I talk to them, the most important, to rebuild that tower, it's gonna be twenty-five thousand dollars. That, yeah, you're looking at twenty, twenty-five thousand to try and redo it all, when I call it. And then, you know, you're looking at, you know, whatever kind of thing you want to build around it, or put it on top of that. And it is listed on our insurance, so, the towers.
Okay, this, it says it here, in case, in case our property damages their property, we'll, we'll pay them, but if, if that, then all, then it says, the Legion will not be responsible if they damage our property. That's not how you do things.
Do you have insurance on the bill?
If, if we're responsible if our property damages yours, your building burst down and damages ours, it's gotta go both ways, guys.
Well, here, here it's covered.
Our insurance will cover ours, but our insurance will not cover that, let's, let's say you're in there, Evernathy or whatever, and if something happens, and a van starts to fire, and it bursts out on our place, our insurance may pay us, but they will sue you anyway, except for this agreement, which says, you don't have to do that. And our insurance company may not pay us either, understand? It's gotta go both ways. Well, you, you can keep it simple if you're, if you make it, if you make it fair, if you make it fair, it's gotta go both ways, guys.
Take that sentence out of there.
Well, just, just add that, 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 and the other thing about as long as it's insurable, you know, so, let me take it home, retype it just like it is, and add this to the log. If you have insurance, your insurance will cover damaging our stuff, okay? And our insurance will cover it, it'll cover that thing, okay?
Just when you start to believe you're there.
What? So, I think I'm getting one free drink out of you someday. Well, maybe, bottle like a dick.
So, you'll, you'll email it to me, and then I can just bring it.
Well, well, how about the next meeting? Put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna change much here, but I, I wanna make it easy, okay? Okay? And then, and then I'm gonna have the clause in that, it, it says this school is health terminated by a little fire, so what, what in the clause says? If, if we become uninsurable, then, then we get terminated, okay? We don't have to have your freedom, they, if our insurance company ever says, yeah, we're not playing this game anymore. That's okay. Okay? So, I mean, I won't make it a lot longer, in fact, what I type it, it'll be this shorter than this, your handwriting's bigger than my typewriter.
Um, I'd like to, before we do this employee compensation, um, I'd like to go into another session, okay? For the purpose of, um, I guess, employ.
Employ, employee compensation, whatever, yeah.
All right.
Got a motion, yeah, second, will you second?
I.
I second.
Okay, all in favor, going to executive session at two fifty-one. What is going?